Good morning, I'm here to help you with your questions. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. We'll be right back. Thank you for joining us. We'll be right back. Thanks 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 for joining us.[500.12]
bedrooms, which is much smaller than a hundred people.
Well, we and well, we don't anticipate the hundred guests staying overnight, correct?
I just wanted to point that out. Yeah. So those are my two biggest questions for the moment.
And the guest or guest for the event, not guest overnight best. Yeah. We realize that, yeah, we're not sleeping a hundred people.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Blake, Green Hall, this is real similar to how the double J ranch is set up. Also, they have a certain number of cabins there that they can have people overnight. Then they have, if they have weddings or such like that, those guests are there during the day and they leave in the evening. They're not staying overnight. So this is really a real similar application to what the double J was. They also have the main, they have a cooking facility at the double J and they also have the main house up there, which also has a big kitchen, commercial kitchens such and I believe that has rooms in it that they also rent.
Can I interject for one minute? I just got a text that there's people that are on, but our audio is still muted. So nobody, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. It just got fixed. Okay. Perfect. Sorry. Go ahead.
The other guest ranch that we have here currently is that is in operation is the Triple Peak Ranch. That is also set up through six bedrooms, basically within the main lodge, all of the cooking, dining, meeting area and stuff is in that main building. All of the bedrooms and such are upstairs. So it is real similar to that. The actual true guest ranch that we had within the county, of course, was the box R. They did have some bedrooms and such in that main lodge also, but they had most of their stuff was in those cabins. So as per our definition, you are totally correct. What is at work on the ground and have been for many, many, many years is a little different. So just so that you understand that those are similar in their uses. So just.
I just pointed out so we can ask you all numbers later.
Okay, sounds good.
So let me ask Dennis, are you, I was just to be clear, are you advocating that we should violate our regulations?
No, I am not. I'm just stating what is, what is out there, what is currently happening and has happened in the past.
If, if the commissioners find that that is an issue with the approval, the one property in the eight eight five is a standalone building that is actually decorated as a saloon and have a kitchen in it as well. It does have bedrooms, but if we had to designate that as an eating only facility, we can do that.
Mind if I ask some questions? So Mr. Christensen, could you, would you mind just describing the agricultural operation that takes place on the Deadshot today?
Yes, there's a current breeding operations. And so there's pressure on horses and Appaloosa horses that are being crossbred bred to provide for pressure on foals as well as the crossbreed is called a sage, sugar bush harlequin. And it's a large animal and it has a mixed colored coat. And so currently there's breeding operations that are going on. The, there's also the fields are haved and made available for the horses as well. And then we have a forest service lease where we're also permitted to hay some of the adjacent land that's owned by the Forest Service.
Okay. So is most of the property that we see used in one way or another for agriculture?
As long as well as the short-term rental permits that are being operated there.
Okay. And how many full-time employees do you have for the current agricultural oriented operation?
Well, there's been a little turnover recently. And so I think there's between three and five full-time agricultural employees there.
Okay. And how many part-time?
I don't know.
Okay. And can you describe like the nature of contractors that you use for the agricultural operation today, if any?
I don't believe there's any contractors.
And can you tell us about like the amount of from non-employees, staff, guests associated with the agricultural operation today? How many would you estimate frequent the property on a daily, weekly, monthly basis?
Well, the one full-time person resides there.
One person resides there.
Correct. And we're looking to hire a couple more that will reside either on this ranch or the adjacent Jackson Fork Ranch. So most of the agricultural folks are actually locally based there.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't have a lot of commute folks that commute in. I guess it's kind of what you're getting at.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as far as thinking about like vehicle trips around, like based on the current, and again agricultural, not the SDRs, but it sounds like relatively few folks either live on site or just next door.
I would agree with that. Yes.
Okay. And then what percentage of revenue for this property today would you say is attributable to the agricultural operation versus the short-term rental?
I don't know.
Operation? You don't know? Okay. Okay. Those are all the questions that I have for right now. I'd like to come back later and ask more. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Kenny, do you have anything?
Are those horses pretty expensive?
Well, they vary, you know, I mean, there's the prize ones, the.
There's a pretty good.
Well, it's, 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 it's a niche market, right?
Just want to be sure that there's.
You don't need to go buy one for $600.
I know.
Can't buy a whole bag for that anymore, but I'm sure these don't qualify for the nags.
I just have a couple of questions for you. Um, in regards to on your application under impact on the transportation systems. We have as such, the only additional guest ranch use will be day guests, which are anticipated to be no more than dot, dot, dot per day.
Yes, I apologize. The application was incomplete. Ed, could you come up?
I don't know that we came up with a.
Can you state your name, please? Thank you.
I don't know that we came up with a hard number. Our discussion was, well, day use, not talking about the events, but just day use. That's going to have to some be somebody that wants to come up there, knows about the place and wants to drop in and use it for the guest ranch allowed operations for. By the fact that they have to travel that far, they have to be only be there for a day. It's going to limit it just by that, those perimeters. So if you get 10 a day, I'd be very surprised. If you get 10 a week, that's more probably what you're talking about. So that was, that's on me, by the way, the, the bolded asterisk there. And when I reviewed my file today and I looked at it, there was a quite a moment of surprise and embarrassment. Anyway, that's the only perimeters that I can think of and that we talked about today. It's just remote. It's day use only. It's going to limit itself.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you. Now, do you expect this to just be open seasonally or do you expect it to be year round?
We had, we had a discussion today on that and we probably should have included it, but it's also kind of a given fact in this country that your special events use at least is going to be probably be limited from June through September, just by the nature of what we see outside here today, which is going to continue on for another month or so, we know. So that's going to limit the special events. The dead of winter, the guest ranch operation, we haven't discussed that, but whether it be open or not, if it is open, the use is going to be rather, rather limited simply because it's under four foot of snow.
I guess I would say we, we wouldn't want to limit ourselves to just the summer.
Right.
If there is somebody that came in and said, hey, I want a winter wedding, we'd like to be able to host that.
Do you, does your short-term rentals, do you keep them open during the winter or do you shut them down? Keep them open during the winter? And then do you guys have any plans like snow machining tours? I understand like with the horse that do rides and stuff like that. Do you have any plans for anything like snow machine tours or anything like that?
We'd be open to that. You know, in order to lead the tours onto the Forest Service land, we have to have use days. We clearly don't have use days. We'd love to get use days, but we don't have them. So it'd have to be on ranch if we did that.
Gotcha. Super. Um. I think, I think that's all the questions. Does anybody else have any?
I have a question about your short-term rentals. How full are your short-term rentals, like your occupancy?
Not very much.
Okay. Just because I ask is the ones that are by me are mostly empty all the time.
And it varies. We had some traction about two years ago and then we took them offline and brought them back online. So it has varied over time. But no, they're not very well occupied right now.
I have, oh, sorry, Kenny. One more question for you. So you did state that the, the ranch manager lives on site. Is that correct?
The, our, our head of our breeding operation lives on site. There's somebody there 24/7.
Okay. I guess the my, what I was getting at is just ensuring that if this did pass through, that there is someone there all the time in case something happens. But there is someone that is there that could respond to any issues or problems that the guests have. Okay.
If the saloon gets made into the, the restaurant or the food department, will the other facility, the lodge be converted into more beds then?
No, I, I imagine we'd take that, keep that as a kitchen. Correct. I mean, I would hope that we could still use it as a kitchen, that if we designate the saloon as a dining hall, that we're not restricted in saying you can only dine there. Or eat there, I should say.
Thank you.
Yes, you cannot go enjoy the outside.
You have to run across the field in order to get to the V.
All right, commissioners, does anybody else have any questions or comments at this time?
I'd like to hear from.
Okay. First of all, we'll start by opening it up to, thank you, gentlemen. We will open it up to public comment in the room and then we will follow by public comment online. So is there anyone that's present that would like to make a comment or have any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. We will go to online. Is there anyone online that would like to make any comments or have any questions? Let's start with Mr. Harold. Please state your name. Oh, we're working on it. Sorry.
You guys remember yet?
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Joe Harold. I just wanted to say that I would like to show my support for what the Deadshot is trying to do up there. I think it's a good addition to the area and seems like reasonable use of the property and the zoning. That's all I've got.
Super. Thank you, Mr. Harold. Ms. Crawl? Lisi, are you there?
I can't unmute.
I think you're good now, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry that I got into the meeting late. I had trouble finding the right code.
Yes, I apologize. We had some technical issues with the previous code. I really apologize about that, but I'm glad that you were able to get in.
Yes. So I'd just like a few pieces of clarification. One is I'm not sure why it's a conditional use permit for a guest ranch. Since it seems like it would be more appropriate as a rezoning. The way that the current regulations are for guest ranch, it doesn't seem to have absolutely anything to do with the guest ranch. So I have a question about that. I, I guess, as I say, I'm wondering whether the conditional use permit is the appropriate avenue to go down. If what they want is to have an events center, which seems to be what, what they want. And then I have a question about number of guests and limited to a hundred. And I'm assuming that guests mean that they can stay overnight. But they only have 12 bedrooms. So I'm curious about how, whether they're going to have five, five people to a bedroom or how the guests are going to be accommodated. And that's a hundred guests. Does that mean that the, that they could have more people there than a hundred people? Or would a hundred people be the maximum that would be there at any time? And again, I apologize if some of this was clarified and I just didn't hear it. The evaluation of the noise, impact and traffic, again, seems to be completely inadequate. And of course will depend on how many people are going up there. How many days a month people are up there? So I'm, I'm not clear about how they, you know, if you say there's not going to be an impact on traffic, that doesn't mean there's not going to be an impact on traffic. So I think there's no traffic study. There's no, I, I don't, I'm not convinced there's not an impact on traffic. And I'm very concerned about the noise up on the Deadshot because noise up there carries everywhere. I'm not worried about it where I am, but for people who are up near the Deadshot, if they have bands playing and that sort of thing, that's going to be terribly disruptive to the people who are around the Deadshot. So again, when they say that there's not going to be any noise, I, I, I don't know where, how they can make that statement. And then I have a question about the wording of the CUP where it says upper, it says the small size of the proposed events will not result in significant impact on the traffic on Upper Hobart County Road as such events will be on a non-scheduled basis. And I'm curious about that because one of the things they say could take place up there are weddings. And weddings, unless you go to Las Vegas and get drunk and go to a drive-through wedding place, they're usually a scheduled event. So I don't understand the wording of that. If you could explain that to me. Those are my questions, concerns.
Great. Well, thank you. Um, all right, let's start off with your question in regards to why it is that they're proposing for a, it to be a guest ranch.
It's a CUP, a conditional use permit on a guest ranch.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair. A guest ranch is allowed through a conditional use through this process on the agricultural property. Guest ranches bring up the double J. That is again, on an agricultural property on that ranch, they hold events around outdoor things, ranch events, meetings, weddings, et cetera. It gives the, for the J, for the double J ranch, it is, provides the ambiance for the backdrop for these weddings, et cetera, that they do. If I don't believe we have guest ranch in any other zoning district. If it was to change or to be something else, actually a guest ranch, there, there is not another zoning district for it. So.
And I think, ma'am, that, that the key here too, is that they're not only wanting to just hold events. They're wanting to be able to have regular guests that stay there. So it's not just an event facility. Am I correct, gentlemen? Secondly, your question in regards to the number of guests and, and we did talk about that, but I'll go over it again. Is that, um, it was stated that they're only going to have up to a hundred guests, but not all of them would stay there. They will be limited, still limited to the same number as in with the short-term rentals. They'll be limited to the number of guests that can actually stay the night. So the number of a hundred is just the maximum number that will be allowed to attend the event, but not to be staying overnight at that location. And then in regards to the wording of the CUP, the small size of the proposed events will not result in significant impact on the traffic on the upper Hobart County Road as such events will be on a non-scheduled basis. Would one of you gentlemen like to address that, please?
The intent of using that language was that they would not be, for example, on the first and second Monday of each month. We're not, we're not saying they will be A, B, and C. They will be scheduled once they come and be planned, but they won't be scheduled out a year in advance of two. Well, for example, my example is on the first Monday and the third Monday. That's to my mind, that was a schedule that I was thinking about. Not that you've got a schedule, you've got to plan it. Yes, but we won't be scheduling ahead for a year on a, on a hard timeframe.
And not like set specific days that things occur every day or set specifically throughout the year. Okay.
Sure. About the time people stay there for her. So how many would be staying there? How a hundred people stay in the?
No, the, the hundred, the hundred guest limitation is on the number of guests. There would be additional people as far as setup people, serving people. And then on the third day or two days, if it's only a half day or something, people come in and tear, tear. And then on the third day or two days, if it's only a half day or something, people come in and tear, tear, tear the tents down, whatever. But the get, the hundred guests does apply to guests. Now, they are not going to stay overnight because there's only so many beds and we're not going to put 10 people to a bed, so.
Can I, just to get some more clarification, because guests is a term we've talked a lot about in the past, it's defined only one place in our regulations, and that's in short-term rentals as overnight paying guests. So you're, we're defining a little bit differently here, so I just want to be clear. So a guest, it sounds like you're defining as somebody who attends the event that is a non-staff or contractor person. Is that accurate?
Correct. Uh, the way I viewed it when I was drafting the application, where you have guests to the wedding, you have people come to the wedding and cater. They would not be guests. You have people that would set up, if if they have a tent, set up a tent. Those people would not be guests. The people that were invited would be guests. That is different from the guest to the guest ranch, which would be the people that would come and use the guest ranch facilities as opposed to the special, uh as opposed to these events.
And would you, do you consider the hosts of the event, the bride, the groom, their families as guests, or do you count them separately? Okay, and you're using guests in another way to talk about people that are at the guest ranch. So we have same word being defined in two different things based on.
And the reason for that is the CUP is for a guest ranch. That's the application, and we would want to proceed with that, even if it's determined that the events are not going to be allowed as part of the guest ranch. We still would want to sue the guest ranch. If that makes any sense.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Can I ask another question? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Uh, I'm I'm still just a little bit confused um about what, I I realize it's a conditional use permit, but wha- what does this, what does an events venue have to do with a guest ranch? I mean, when, when would you ask for a rezoning as opposed to a CUP? Can can somebody explain that to me? Because it seems to me like a an events venue, which is what this clearly is, what the intended use is for, has very little to do with our understanding of a guest ranch. When would you advise somebody to get a rezoning as opposed to a CUP? I'm I'm not clear about that.
Okay, Lisi, this Dennis. This, the way that this has been um used in the past is similar to the double J ranch. They have existing cabins, existing infrastructure. What they were wanting to do, they had, uh, want people to come and stay. They put on um events, um some of it, whether it be schools for agricultural type purpose, they put on weddings in the barn. And we permitted that through the guest ranch. That is a commercial operation where you have guests that come and stay and eat and do something at a given location. Currently, within the regulations, there is not anything for an events type, an events center. If you were going to do something such as a resort, a destination resort, which has quite a few different aspects than a guest ranch, as happened kinda um on the Jackson Fork Ranch there. They would, they then came in and rezone that for a resort, which that resort then allows basically general public, non-invited guests to that location um to enjoy that property. A guest ranch is something that there are specific invited guests. It's a ver- it's a more controlled type situation. There, they will know the numbers of people that are are going to be there. Even if they have a wedding event, um there will be so many people that are staying at the facilities that are there with a limited number of guests. So that is, would be the difference and why we are looking at a conditional use for guest ranch versus a rezone for a resort.
Okay, I I mean, I still, it it's still the case that the Deadshot, I don't know where the, is it the double J?
Yes.
I don't know where the double J is, but I do know that the Deadshot is in critical elk, moose, deer, migratory path habitat. And so in keeping with both the agricultural kind of use of that area and the habitat, it seems to me that this is an inappropriate use for that particular guest ranch. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So I have a question for you, Dennis. Is the box R a guest ranch?
The box R was probably the one true guest ranch that Sublet County had. It has not been in operation now for
Correct.
10, 12 years.
But it was considered a a guest ranch.
Yes.
What is the black powder?
Actually, the black powder is the guest ranch, and that sits right there at the mouth of the canyon.
And Ms. Crawl, I think that you probably know where that is. So that's another good example of a guest ranch that is close to your proximity. Um, what is the Timberline?
The Timberline is operates as a guest ranch and outfitting. And that is, yeah, the very upper end of North Beaver.
Not very far from the Deadshot.
No, right.
As the crow flies.
No, it's up there on forest. Um, she has limited amount of cabins also. They have clients come in and out.
And they also do events there, to my knowledge, or they used to. They might not anymore.
Yeah, I I do not know. It hasn't been in real operation over the last couple of years.
Correct.
The double J ranch is located just west of Daniel, um right out towards the it's not Mesa out there, but mid midway up Horse Creek.
It's in between Horse Creek and uh the Green River.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about seven miles up Horse Creek.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else? Oh, I see, uh PB, is that, is that Pat? Pat, are you on?
It is. I got, I just unmuted.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much for allowing me to um speak. First, I'd like to um make a couple of clarifications. It seems like the applicant are a bit confused about what they actually have because first, well, number one, I want to ask Dennis a question if that's okay.
Yeah, you can, you can ask us, Pat, and and we'll pass it on to Dennis. Thank you.
Okay, um, my question is, as I recall, when we allowed the CUP for the uh double J, that they had a limit of two events per year.
So Dennis, do you recall?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, cuz that's wasn't even brought in. It's like, you know, sometimes the details are pretty important, and knowing that the double J does have a CUP for a guest ranch, which is understandable. This place of the Deadshot, you know, maybe guest ranch is a good uh tied or good thing for it, but the possibility of limiting the number of events would be really helpful. Lisi is very, very on on target when she talks about the traffic on the Hoback Road because it it's um, the issue is not, I mean, a hundred guests, maybe two per car, so that's 50, or let's just say 40 cars. Because some of the people are going to be staying up there, of course, but then all of the the caterers, the tent people, in and out, in and out, in and out, setup people. You know, all the ancillary staff is, it's it, there is going to be an impact on the road and to the, to the event and by other recreational and residential users of the road. So that's, that's one thing, and um as far as the Deadshot goes, most um there are five, according to what I understand and what I've, the bit of investigation I've done, there's five STRs up there. Of those, two are inhabited by full-time employee employees with families. There's the manager, and then there's another employee and and her partner up there. So there's only that leaves two, one three-bedroom and one four-bedroom STRs that could be used because the third, the fifth one is the saloon. So, so there's really a lot of limited things that go on there. That it's, it seems to me that some of the information about what's there and what's, what goes on or every, anything like that, we need to have some specific conditions such as two events per year or three events per year. Because if you've got a horse operation, which they do, they have a wonderful horse operation up there, and they have wonderful employees, and the employees are, you know, part of the community. One of them is on the fire department. And so there's, there's a lot of good things about having that, uh about having the um a CUP, but it's it needs to be restrained mostly to a guest ranch, to a place where you've got livestock issues, you've got ranch activities, just like the definition in the planning and zoning regulation says. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows.
Can I speak to that just a little bit?
Yes, please.
Answer a couple of those questions?
That would be great.
As far as the current STRs up there, I believe, best of my knowledge, that there are three of those buildings, three of the living structures that are currently under STRs. I know there's been a couple of them that have been dropped. The double J, I've got that paperwork on my desk um as far as the resolution and such, what what was adopted for that conditional use. I do not believe that there are, is a two-event maximum on that. I can pull that paperwork if you'd like. Um, it's on my desk. I had it out.
Uh, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, that would be fantastic. Um, with that being said, I have another question for you gentlemen. Um, in regards to, so is Ms. Burrows correct in that two, there's two families that are living on site full-time?
Yes, she is correct.
Okay.
Yes, there are two families currently residing on site.
Okay, and and I guess with that, just to re- Okay, we're back. Um, so essentially, though, you guys are content with the the three current buildings that you have listed under STRs. Those will be the proposal, the three that.
We'd like to, you know, if we decide to relocate the person or have them, you know.
Move to a different.
Yes, correct.
Correct.
The, I guess the the idea would be that we'd like the right to repair, maintain, replace, or improve, as long as it doesn't expand significantly at the footprint of the current buildings. That that is correct. We have no intentions to build uh or expand the current buildings that are on the ranch.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What do you got for us, Dennis?
So on the conditional use that was approved for the double J ranch, the main condition that was put on it and carried through by the commissioners, there is one that the double J uh Ranch LLC provide a business plan that will follow with this CUP. In that business plan, they lay out, uh basically their event season is from May 1st through November 1st. They state what type of events. They have availability for 30 overnight guests. They have availability for parking up to 250 guests for the day event. There is no limitation on the number of events.
Okay, thank you for look. No, go ahead.
Okay, so the um, I mean, typically what would happen when we approve a CUP is that when the CUP is put forth as, we we approve it as proposed. Now there we have the condition that they submit a business plan. Who, who reviewed that business plan, Dennis? Was that you or like, cuz that didn't come before P and Z commission?
No.
We, I believe we had that when it went to commissioners, and it is attached with the.
Okay, so in their proposal, which I'm looking at right now here, it says the ranch managers are projecting keeping a steady flow of year-round guest cabin rentals along with hosting approximately two weddings per year. So if that is in fact not what they said in their business plan, then I would say that there was a fault in approving that business plan cuz it contradicts their proposed use of that. It doesn't comport with their master plan, which is, would seem to me to be a violation of that CUP.
And I don't exactly know how they're operating, but that is not what, that that is not included within the rotation.
Right, we wouldn't have put a condition on it since it was, I mean, if someone tells us they're doing something, we wouldn't then say as a condition, you have to do the thing you said you were gonna do. So just to.
Okay, so moving on, um, is there anyone else online that has any questions or comments? All right. So with that being said, is there any other comments by the, questions by the applicants? Okay, all right, so um without any further questions, do the commissioners have any comments that they'd like to make?
I would like to go back to make sure no one else in the room has comments.
Okay, sorry.
They might have changed their minds.
Oh, perfect. Okay, sir, if you wouldn't mind coming up front and getting a microphone and stating your name, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mark Anselmi from Cora and Bondran. This might be a little out of order, but I'm confused about what goes on down the street and what goes on at the Deadshot. You got the, what's it called, the? Jackson Fork Ranch. What goes on down there? What goes on at the Deadshot? Is this out ordered asset, or is that a guest ranch, too, or what's that down there? And was there cabins down there?
Are we talking about Jackson Fork Lodge or Jackson Fork Ranch?
Where McNeil's used to live down the road there.
So where McNeil's is, that is still just part of the ranch operation. The Jackson Fork Lodge um and the main house and stuff on the upper end lower end of the Jackson Fork is under, does. lower end of the Jackson Fork is under, does can have a CUP for a guest ranch to operate that lodge that is existing there. The ranch itself is a separate, separate type of use. The Deadshot is a separate entity from, from the Jackson Fork Ranch.
So, they written, what are they doing at that guest ranch?
So- Oh, at the Jackson Fork?
Um, that, I don't know, they, it's permitted for a guest ranch to have guests and such to stay there. I, as far as I know.
Thank you, sir.
At one time, they asked to put the Deadshot onto that, and the county said no, so, we're here now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bailey, did you have a comment or question?
Thank you.
Chair Holly.
Thank you.
Roberts, rest of the board. Dan Bailey from Little Jackson Hole. The CUP application to Deadshot Ranch appears to be another attempt to expand the use of the hundred-and-fifty, ninety-acre property and likely other properties along the Upper Hoback Road. Uh, the applicant previously introduced short-term rentals and now proposes a guest ranch seemingly to presenting a new issue as a solution to the last. It raises the questions of what their next proposal will be to address problems created by the guest ranch. As we've talked about, there's not enough rooms there for the people that they're planning on having. There's no clear evidence that we've seen the full impact of the short-term rentals or the Jackson Fork Ranch. I don't think, for the most part, much of that's occupied yet, so to say that the traffic will be the same is not likely to be correct. The traffic studies in the past have all been from the highway up, which doesn't account for traffic along the road for in a complete count. Seems to, to me that the applicant is taking incremental steps towards a much larger operation without fully disclosing their long-term plan. The public record through letters and community participation overwhelmingly imposes the continued upzoning of agricultural lands. Such changes threaten to harm Sublet County by encouraging land speculation, unchecked development, disrupting wildlife habitat such as the critical winter moose and elk habitat, and driving appropriate taxes and ultimately undermining the goals and intent of the comprehensive plan. There's no obligation to grant a conditional use permit by the Planning and Zoning Board of the Board of County Commissioners, especially if it would be materially harmful to enabling landowners, the broader community. The, I believe this would be materially injurious to my property and my improvements. My neighbors have a party once a year. My neighbors are about a third of a mile away from me, I think I'm maybe thirteen-hundred feet away from the Deadshot Ranch. When they were having their event last year, I was up hiking on Kilgore Creek, which is two-point-one miles away. And I could clearly hear the music there, what will it be like at my home? There are no curfews, time limits on traffic, night activity, lighting, none of that's addressed in this application. And I don't know how you'd begin to mute the sound, if I can hear it that far away. There's a number of clauses in the Planning and Zoning Regulations that address this. I understand what Lisi said regarding the traffic issues and the noise from traffic and the particulate from traffic, and that we're gonna having alcohol served at this venue and the safety issue that will create with people driving down the road. People showing up at different people's properties because they're lost, it's gonna be intrusive. We made substantial investments in our property and land, while the Jackson Fork continues to downplay the impact on our developments, and it shifts from a ranch to a large-scale non-for-profit resort. And, call it what you want, guest ranch, resort, event center. It seems to me that this is be something totally different for the valley rather than what it stands as right now. So, I ask that you please deny this application. And final comment is, I don't know what the J&amp;J Ranch does or any other ranch has on the impact of what this application is. If somebody is not following the regulations, I don't think it's relevant to the conversation we're having here tonight. Thank you for your time, appreciate your efforts and your volunteering.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Question for Dan.
Yes, sir.
So, so do you know when people are in the short-term rentals?
Sometimes I do, I mean, I've had them pull up on their, their SUVs when they come up the road and honk at the cows because they're in the way. Been almost hit on the road one time, and those were people going up there. For the most part, they're really not occupied very often, and neither is the lodge. So, there's not much impact at this point. Thank you. Those, those people that are there are staying as guests or not having parties, but you're asking, they're asking for that to change.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment? All right. With that being said, I will turn it over to the commissioners for comments or further questions.
I have a lot. Okay, I have a number of questions for you gentlemen, so you might wanna take a place at the table here, if you. And I've got a lot, and I know that everybody's gonna grow tired, so we'll try to move quickly through these. So, I guess first, Mr. Anselmi's question just made me think, what, could you describe what's, what is the current status and kind of operation of the Jackson Fork Lodge today? Is it operational as a-
Yes, a guest ranch.
It is, okay. And what is the latest status and plan for the RS1 lot there?
I don't know.
Is that my phone on?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I guess I'm curious, do you, would you describe a wedding or a corporate meeting as a recreational activity?
Well, I'd ask what, what significance that has in your mind.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, would you?
Do you?
I, I would not, no, but would you?
Yes, I would.
Okay. And do you think that a wedding or a corporate meeting is incidental to agricultural operation?
I, I, well.
I would view it as incidental because it's, it's just periodic. The, the agricultural operation is ongoing, day-to-day. And the events that are being proposed would be periodic, not scheduled on the second Monday or the first Monday of each event, and, and would be incidental or secondary to the agricultural operation. That would at least be my view.
So, you're, just to be clear, that you're, you're saying it's incidental based on the number of days that it, it happens, that's your-
That would be my view, yes.
That's your definition on incidental, okay. And I guess, could you point me to where, like, on what basis do you see in the zoning regulations where recurring commercial events are allowed on A1 zoning districts?
Well, in my view, it'd be that that decision was, has already been made when the Double J permit was allowed.
So, is that in the zoning regulations?
I would suggest that a guest ranch is a commercial operations, and so a conditional use permit permits commercial operations on A1 zoning property.
This sorts of activities that a, let me just go back to the question. So, you're, you're saying that you think, your interpretation is that in the zoning regulations that the, the definition and the regulations around guest ranches allows recurring commercial events?
Well, I guess I would ask you if you view a guest ranch as a commercial. They're charging money, they're having guests, they're staying there, they're providing events, rides, horseback riding and such, whatnot. So, my, our position is, yes, by virtue of the reg, the structure of the regulations that permit commercial conditional use permits for guest ranch, that opens the doors to a commercial activity on A1 zoning property.
Okay. Have you coordinated with local fire, EMS, police on access and emergency response planning around events at this location?
No.
Okay, do you have, have you done any evacuation planning for wildfire, medical, or weather emergencies?
I, I think a lot of that has to do with the size of the event and the guest, and as we approach when we have an actual event, those are all things that will be addressed at that time and will certainly be of paramount importance. And as, as far as the, so, so, at this point, no.
Okay.
As the events kick off, or if the CUP is approved, and as we schedule those events, we'll coordinate that as needed.
And do you, do you plan on having staff be trained in CPR, first aid, emergency response, or anything like that?
Yes.
Yeah. Can you talk about your plan for waste removal during and after the event?
Again, that's gonna pretend, that's gonna be addressed at the time of event, understanding the scale. You know, a ten-person wedding is probably not going to require much additional infrastructure, a hundred guests, absolutely.
Okay, so TBD, it sounds like. Uh, will alcohol be served at the events?
That will depend upon the, the event, people who are requesting to host the event.
So, what, how, assuming that there is, what, what's the planning around liquor licensing or getting the appropriate-
We would have to follow the state statutes. And especially use permit would have, excuse me, especially use permit. A, an event permit would have to be allowed to a licensed, a license holder to provide that certain thing as any other off-site thing, situation.
Okay. And so, one of the considerations we're asked to consider is whether a special need will be met. And I'm curious if you could tell us, what is the specific special need that you see the CUP fulfilling that can't be met in commercially kind of oriented or resort zones?
The ability to have a wedding or other event in the unique location of the Jackson Fork. It's very beautiful, the surrounding, surrounding areas beautiful. You can't have it in downtown Pine Dale and have the same type of situation, experience, if you will.
And what's your estimated local economic, what's the less, estimated local economic benefit to Sublet County of this operation?
I haven't made any estimate on that.
Okay.
People coming and going.
Okay. The, the one to two full-time jobs that you say may be created, what do you anticipate those roles are? Or positions?
Event, events, planning and coordinating.
Okay, and those would be seasonal, I guess, because you said, well, I don't know, it sounds like you're still discussing whether this is year-round or not, but you, it sounds like, based on what you said this evening-
Well, I think the demand's gonna be seasonal.
Right.
Right.
So, this, you think the positions will be seasonal?
Yeah.
So, full-time positions, okay. And what do you anticipate?
I guess, I would say probably with additional ranch duties as well. So, not, not solely an event planner, you know, but managing the, you know, if, if it's operating as a guest ranch, so then managing the, the housekeeping services as they turn and whatnot.
Okay. So, I guess then, excuse me, getting over a cold here. Do you believe, I guess, that your CUP will increase your own land value, and how do you anticipate it would impact those around you, their land values?
I think you're asking me to speculate, I don't know.
Okay. Can you describe the current land uses that surround your property?
Forest service, land, and then neighbors to the north.
So, and that would be agricultural, residential? Is that accurate?
I don't know what the neighbors do, I'm sorry.
But the general land zoning district and uses that you do see from your perspective are?
I, I think you know what the zoning is out there.
It would be large, large tract residential or agricultural. And then, as you go up the, up north, some of the parcels are smaller, but the ones immediately to the north are large parcels, large parcel residential. And there's all those, those are all A1.
And are any of your neighbors running commercial venues?
I don't know. I don't know.
Uh, I, do, those three on Upper Hoback Road?
I, I don't know of any commercial operations that are going on there.
Okay. Let's see. Uh, so, one of the things that, that we're, we look at, based on the comprehensive plan guidance and the regulations is around promoting and supporting agricultural uses in Sublet County, it's something that's talked a lot about, and I'm just curious, could you speak to, how you think this proposal reinforces agricultural use viability?
It, it provides another income stream to help support the underlying agricultural use of the property.
Okay. You mentioned in your application that your use won't harm neighboring land values. This evening, you say that you won't speculate on that, but you did speculate on that in your application, so I'm just curious, what data do you use to support that claim?
Well, it was just an overview of how extensive the impact was going to be. And the view was the impact was not going- The overview was the impact was not going to be significant. So, that's the reason that it was, that's the reason that was arrived at. As far as data, there was no, there's no data that I can refer you to. That was just a viewpoint.
So, speculation?
I, I would suggest that there's a difference between speculation on impact of value, property values, which is what I thought you asked me, versus impact on the traffic or demand.
I am talking about property values, land values, yeah.
I, you know, I don't know what, holding an event, three events per month, how that's gonna impact the neighboring value. I, I can't speculate on that, I do not know.
Okay, so in your application, you said that it wouldn't, but it sounds like the actual answer is you don't know.
Did we say that in the application? Yes, okay, yes, we did then, I apologize.
Okay.
We, we, and I think it's our, our belief that the values will not be impacted because of the, the current use as short-term rentals and the, the like, the change we see in the guest ranch is the ability to hold these events. So, currently, the Deadshot properties are permitted for short-term rentals. And so, the distinction and the change, if the CUP is approved, is the ability to hold the events. And so, given that, again, the property values, we already have the right to have guests come up and stay in thirty-four beds, okay? And so, it's the, the ability to hold the events that's gonna be the marginal impact.
Okay, but that, so that's your belief, you don't have any- Okay, but that you're so that's your belief. You don't have any data to support that?
That's correct. That's our belief.
All right. Have you done any studies, sound studies or anything like that to support you? You you say in your application that the sound won't go beyond the borders of the property line or not much further than the property line or something along those lines. Is there, what did you, how did you come up with that?
There are no studies that I am aware of.
So what was the basis of that statement then?
It was a viewpoint that is 120 acres and that the noise volume wouldn't be sufficient to be significantly impactful outside of that 120 acres.
What is the noise volume that you're thinking of there? Like?
I I don't have a database once again to.
But I mean, is it is it a band playing? Is it a DJ? Is it people talking? When you think about the sound that's being produced from these events, what is, I'm just curious, what is, what do you imagine as the sound source?
The the sounds of the the actual wedding is fairly quiet. There would be, I assume on occasions people would want a band, on occasions people would not.
Right. And and you you think that if you had a band that you wouldn't hear that band beyond the boundaries or much beyond the boundaries of the property?
That would be my big guess.
Okay, but that's
That's a guess. That's my view.
Okay.
No, no data.
Okay. So do you have any sort of noise mitigation plan?
Again, that's going to be event specific. Currently, no.
Okay. All right. Any plans around curfews for lighting or noise?
Again, it's going to depend on what the event is, what the the festivities have have been requested. And we'll take that into consideration.
Okay. Do you have any dust mitigation plans for increased traffic on those roads?
No, it's county road.
Right. Okay. Let's see. So I'm going to guess then you have not, well, I'll ask the question instead of guessing. Have you assessed how dust will impact from from the additional traffic? We're talking about over three days here, three times a month. Hundreds of vehicles probably, how that will impact air quality, wildlife, neighboring landowners, any assessment around that?
No.
No. Okay. What are your plans for conforming or not to the game and fish recommendations?
As as I read the game and fish regulations, they basically related to offenses were to be replaced, they would be constructed of wildlife friendly format. I believe that's that's what's already followed there, but I don't know. I'm assuming that would be the case and we would conform to that.
Let's see. So they made recommendations around that. They made recommendations around or you avoiding avoiding development and construction activities, which they generally describe as ground disturbing activities, November 15th, April 30th. They talked about avoiding bear conflict. There's a number of other recommendations. Do you have any plan around conforming to those or?
Well, we've already said there's not going to be any additional construction related to the CUP. If it's granted, so there wouldn't be any groundbreaking during that period of time. I suppose if 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 the recommendation is for bear proof canisters, that certainly can be complied with.
Right. But no specific plans, as we said here today?
No.
Okay. Do you have any estimate of how many peak hour vehicle trips these events will generate?
It's going to depend upon the event, but no.
And you mentioned that you haven't done any analysis and around traffic in your report because of the variability, but there are standards for doing that. We've talked with your representatives a number of times about the IT trip generation standards. So I'm going to, have you done any use that to even with variation arrangements?
That has not been done in regard to this because of the variability. We you're talking about a three day event such as a wedding. But the three day, but the event could also just be a retirement party, which would be about a one day event. It could be a corporate retreat, which would be no more than three, but would be much less than three than 100 people. The variability of that really does lend itself to those types of studies. At least from the broad range of factors that go into that that I see.
Okay. Have you coordinated with YDOT or County Road and Bridge around signage, maintenance, turn lane, any traffic control, anything around those?
No.
Okay. Any plans for guest drop off, ADA access, emergency vehicle access, overflow parking, anything like that?
The the parking would be on the private property. There would be no overflow and overflow parking onto either public or other private property. And again, the the tying in with the entities that you mentioned would be dependent upon the scale of the event.
And Keith, tell us about how do you, what which aspects or specific comprehensive plan policies or goals do you think your application conforms to?
I think it conforms to the basic of the private property rights that are encouraged to be supported. It supports agricultural because it provides different, a another income stream to support the agricultural operations.
Yeah, I think in Dennis's report to this commission, there was a detailed explanation of what a comprehensive plans are supported by this.
And which comprehensive plan policies and goals do you think your application is in conflict with?
I don't know that there are really anyone except for possible, the possible impact on adjacent landowners. I don't see that. And it wasn't when we discussed putting the application together, that didn't seem to be a problem. But if it was to be a problem, that is one that would come to mind.
Okay. And what's your estimate of, you know, when we talk about, let's say that we have an event with 100 guests that you hit that max, what do you, what's your estimate of how many staff vendors, other contractors would be involved in an event? So if we have 100 guests, add up all the other folks that are working the event, what do you, what do you guess that is? Do you have any estimates around that?
I do not. I don't. I don't have any any experience in the entertainment type industry.
Okay. And what do you, we talked earlier about, excuse me, how we have 100 guests, there's 20, about 25 ish. Sleeps about 25, what you have there today. So the other 75 guests, what what is your thinking about where those guests sleep?
What depends on where they come from. If if it's a local wedding, a local family, most of them would go home to their house. If it's someone from out of out of the state and the guests were from out of state, they would go back to hotel rooms in Jackson, Bonduron, Pinedale.
Okay. In the, in the application, you emphasize the applicant's ownership of the surrounding land in a in a question around land surrounding compatibility with her compatibility with surrounding land uses. You talk about, you make a parenthetical statement that the owner, that much of that land is owned by the applicant and that there are only three other neighbors. I'm curious if you could tell me, how does, how does that fact relate to land use compatibility in your mind?
It relates to the impact on the on adjacent lands and a large part of the adjacent agricultural lands in the Upper Hoback are owned by a common principal, though not a common entity.
So do you think that the amount of ownership impacts the extent of compatibility for land uses?
It certainly, it certainly impacts the land per se. And the impact on other landowners. If, if, for example, the double J is a large landowner, their impact therefore is more on their land than adjacent landowners.
So I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm having trouble following that logic. So you're saying
I don't doubt that.
Land use compatibility. So if I own more land, I'm more likely to be compatible with land uses than if I owned less land? Is that the argument?
Impact is is will be less.
How is that? I mean, well, I guess the question is, is it, does it make it more or less compatible with the land uses surrounding the amount of ownership? Does that make something more or less compatible?
Yes.
It does. How so?
If I own this, if I own this table and I want to use something and someone owns over here, my use is more compatible with the adjacent land because I own the adjacent land.
Well, so the question is around whether there's compatible land uses. I mean, if we, I would say an apple's not an orange. If I own 100 apples and 100 oranges, it doesn't make it any more true than if I own one apple and one orange and apples, still an apple and an orange is still an orange, right?
But if you want to cut that apple up and make it something else and you own 100 of them and surrounding it, I would say that it is more compatible, but
Okay.
I mean, pretty soon we're going to be, I mean,
Okay.
Ahead of a pin, but.
Well, I just wanted to get your perspective on that. So if you didn't own adjacent parcels or you didn't have as much land, then it sounds like you think that your proposed use would be less compatible.
It could be.
Interesting. Okay. So do you think that that sounds like that gives a privilege to folks in the county that own more land than folks that own less land?
Not a privilege. It's it's just the impact.
Okay, interesting. And do you think that compatibility then changes based on how many neighbors are affected?
I don't know that I'm following that one.
So you 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 make the point of we only have three neighbors. The question though is, are there compatible land uses in the surrounding area? So you you make a point of saying we've got three neighbors. If you had 50 neighbors, but the land uses were the exact same, would that change the equation?
There would be more impact, yes.
More.
And again, we're talking, I, I think we have to try to clarify that the impact of a CUP guest ranch is different if from if the special events are to be allowed under that CUP guest ranch. The impact of of a guest ranch is much, much less than if you were to to have the special events. I mean, I I certainly acknowledge that.
Right. Yeah. I mean, the question, the core question is around land use compatibility. So, you know, we think here about residential is compatible with residential, agricultural, residential are pretty compatible. You know, plopping down a big commercial thing right in the middle of a bunch of agriculture and residential, I would argue is less compatible. So, so I guess the the question you're asking about. Did you want to say something, Dennis?
Yes. The compatible use is how you're going about this. And I can see necessarily the points you're you're making, commercial use versus an agricultural use. But within our zoning districts, within the agricultural zoning district is the one place that we allow guest ranch. So if the adjacent lands are also agricultural, their allowed uses in the zoning district are the same. Is that not correct?
Well, I would argue that guest rent, the definition and regulations of guest ranch would not allow this sort of recurring commercial events. It's not an event center. It talks about incidental and then it gives specific things, horseback riding, fishing, those sorts of things is how it's defined. So I think if you're, if if the premise of your point is that this sort of thing would be allowed, I would disagree with that.
No, you're saying that everyone that has a one up there has the option to do the same thing they're doing.
The the zoning is similar. Those uses within those zoning districts are the same.
Well, they don't have the option. It's because it's a conditional use. Conditional uses are conditional uses because if everyone had the option, that would be seen as harmful and detrimental to the public welfare, safety and health.
They have the option to bring it to us.
They do because of the zoning is similar or is the same actually. So I don't think there's a difference in the zoning districts. We're not putting, you know, we're not changing that zoning district. I just wanted to kind of clarify that because the zoning districts within that whole surrounding area are the same.
Right. So we're talking, yeah, we're talking about
We're talking about.
Land uses. So so here we're thinking about, does an agriculture operation and how that land is used, does a residential operation, how that land is used, is that compatible with an operation in a land use that is multiple nine days of events per per month with hundreds of people?
Under a conditional use for a guest ranch.
Well.
So regardless, that is what we're talking about.
Is it a compat, is it a compatible land use is the question? Because that's one of our criteria, right, for considering.
Okay. And as far as looking at compatible uses, I believe you're looking at zoning districts. As far as the zoning, the zoning is the same. Those uses could be.
But conditional uses require that you look at the very specific circumstances of the use. That's why they're conditional uses. So the question on the table is, is the operation that's proposed a compatible land use with those that are surrounding it? That's the question. So I'm looking for compatible in in definition of from these gentlemen about how they view that. Sorry, Blake, did you want to say something?
Well, I'm just saying there is, I mean, not completely adjacent, but there is compatible guest ranch facility right down the road.
But that's a different operation, right? That's overnight lodging. That's a very different. I mean, there, what's being proposed here is more like an event center. But this is the whole premise of the whole framing of this, even in the application and memo that was shared is we want to have weddings. And that's why we're moving away from short term rentals, which don't allow these for that very purpose. And into this. So the whole framing of it, is it about these recurring events?
I think we're losing some of the focus. Focus is, one, we like a conditional use permit for a guest ranch. And if we get that, we would like that under the uses, we would like to be used, be able to use it for events. It's A, and if we get A, then we'd like B. It's not, if we don't get A and B, we don't want anything.
Well, we've got an application in front of us with the very specific asking. That's what we have to respond to tonight.
Very specific for a for a guest ranch. And then if the guest ranch is allowed, then we would like these uses under the guest ranch. If you don't allow those uses, we still want the guest ranch.
Okay. Well, what we have in front of us tonight is what we need to focus on. So, but thank you for saying.
You're just being transparent with what your plan is with the property.
One way to look at it.
Correct.
Okay. Could you show us just on the map of the property here? What do you, I mean, and you gave us like the where the parking is and stuff, your map, but I just, do you imagine that the whole property will be used by guests and events? And how do you imagine the property usage?
For guests at the guest ranch, yes. For the events, it would be dependent on, one, the type of event. And two, if it's an event where there's going to be a set location where the person wants to be it. I doubt they'd want to be in the middle of a hayfield in the middle of June. But if that was their dream and they wanted to set a tent about there, that's where it would be.
Okay. Do you plan on using platform tents, yurts, regular tents, RVs, other temporary sort of mobile places for
Residence?
Lodging for prepping and staging for? No.
I don't, I don't think.
Up in the station possibly depends upon the event.
So like an event, like a wedding tent to put tables under, that would be temporary that you set up and take down.
Or food truck.
Yes.
But not a, but not a yurt for lodging, overnight use, no.
And you mentioned that you're not seeking building permits now. In the future, do you anticipate that you would be seeking additional building permits for this lot?
I think I mentioned we've looked for building permits for repair, replacement, improvement of the existing structures.
Okay.
So we do not anticipate building, requesting building permits for new structures.
So no building permits for new structures. Okay. Do you plan on using any of the other lots that the applicant owns or facilities that the applicant owns? Do you plan on using any of the other lots that the applicant owns or facilities that the applicant owns? For lodging, event activities associated with this guest ranch and events?
That's a standalone unit, so the. The lodging certainly could be. But uh, I don't know whether any plans are not. I'm not the big planning of this. So some of these questions I'm not able to even respond to.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think. I'm not so certain that the question. Whether or not they stay at the hotel in Pinedale, stay at a hotel in Jackson, or stay at the guest ranch at the Jackson Pork Ranch, which is three miles down the road. I, I don't know the relevance of what, why that's important. I would hope that they would stay at the guest ranch, three miles down the road, Jackson Pork Ranch. I mean, that would be ideal.
Yeah.
But.
Any, do you imagine any other use of those properties or facilities for things other than overnight lodging?
When you say, uh, at the Deadshot? I, I'm sorry, can you ask?
So for, for events that you're having at the Deadshot, do you anticipate using the other properties that this applicant owns?
Part of the event? No.
So for, for any act, any staging preparation? It sounds like lodging, yes, but other, any other things?
No, if, it's going to be contained in the Deadshot.
Okay. So. And then I guess, I mean, I, do you, are you aware, you know, that? In, in a conditional use permit, that the burden is on the applicant to provide us with the information we need to make decisions about the criteria and the findings? That are in front of us?
Yes.
You do, okay. Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Do you want a break? Be all right?
Yeah, everyone again with that? Take a quick break. Okay, we'll take a two minute, let's say five, let's say five, Kenny, you're kind of old. Just teasing. Five minute break and we will re-commence. Jay said, I guess maybe I can make mention of this when we get back on, but he tried to get onto the meeting and it's. He's having issues and he said that his phone won't work where he's at and his wifi is. Pretty marginal. And so he's tried to get on, but it's not working. Yeah.
Pretty much, we can. Middle of last, end of last year. Quite a few people, all those guys were poor.
Yeah.
They had a company basically leased that whole facility last year.
Yeah.
Hotel type of situation, just like it is, the lodge. Yeah, it's been leased out. I do not know what.
Yeah. Yeah, I was curious. I've always thought that. Like if you could get a very small restaurant there, no, probably might be camp, correct?
Yeah.
But, and it used to be, like, years ago.
Yeah.
It was a great place where to stop a little bit and stop.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just not a very big spot.
Now, did the same people before, did the same people on that, on the lodge, it was happening across the town, so. Like a long time ago? No, it was always.
Yeah, the ones across the road. That family is trying to fix stuff up. It has come about yet.
Always their grandkids were trying to burn the cabins down.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were driving through Monirat one day and one of those had all been outbuildings, like one of the, in fact, the last time I went through that, they had like a little round pants set up around it. But the little grandkids had been playing with matches, locked that little. Outbuilding.
A bunch of those just been tore down.
So, yeah, here's the next, yeah.
Big thing with that. Bring back as much construction as they want.
Would be harder there, so.
It's actually set up to be pumped up on the ground.
Yeah.
I think we would have done.
Right.
And had designed that whole system. That is what proves it. Because that, that has to, you can basically run it down, downhill, basically to collect all the cabins.
Yeah. Then that place that, you know? No, there's, it's good.
It's really good, it's really close to the road that.
Right.
It's on the line.
Yeah. That is that old building. That old house that was there. Yeah. Yeah, where did you say that you were at though? Oh, by Granger, yeah. Yeah. But Kenny was calling. Brings today, when he left, it was just like wet. But then whenever he came to go back, he said it was wizard post, wizard post the whole way back. Yeah.
I've got a first tone color pickup.
Of spring. I don't even want to know how much we have at our house. Probably, I don't know, a couple inches, like five. Go hard. Yeah.
Well, then we brewed in the gomel, we started the mail, and it was like. I don't really want to go to work tomorrow, so it's like, let's just not put them back on. And they're really sunken for a while.
Yeah. When it's, that smell is so wet and heavy, it's like, ugh.
Should almost put on again. Right here in Nebraska is nice and windy.
Reconvene.
All right, I will call this meeting back to order. We will reconvene with commissioners' questions and comments. Blake, would you like to go next?
Um. Well, I'll start. You know, I, I just. It seems like there's a lot of, or not confusion about what, what the applicant is really here asking for and what that means. Which somewhat goes back to. The question of, is not anything to do with the CUP or a guest ranch, but is a wedding on A1 allowed? In the way the regulations are written now, seeing that there's a lot of weddings happen on A1 that. Aren't guest ranches, aren't anything. So I, I think the. The events has muddied down the whole thing of they are asking for a CUP for a guest ranch. Which. How we go through that is uh. Yet to be seen in the rest of this meeting. But I. I, I feel that a lot of the concerns that people have with the right stipulations and conditions put on the CUP. That they could greatly be mitigated and. Many of the questions about impact and road and those. Not that it's this, this exact application, but many of those are the same issues that we have set and talked about for. Eight years now about the resort and when we rezoned RS1 and. In all of those things. It was always the road would be okay and those things would be able to be mitigated. So that's kind of where I stand right now. But just to reiterate, they are asking for a CUP for a guest ranch. And then want to understand if a wedding is a perm, allowed use outright. At a guest ranch as an outdoor activity and if it's not, it'd be allowed. Are written as a condition into the thing. And how we want to read the regulations.
Super. Did you want to hit anymore? You had mentioned the numbers in regards to the rooms and did you want to touch base on that anymore?
Do you want me to go into all the things that I think would have to, we would come, have to come up with conditions for?
Um, you can do it now or we can come back around. You want to come back around?
Oh, I'll, I'll bring him up now and then as we go around, if someone else wants to add to him, and then we gotta figure out or write him anyways. Definitely address the number of events per year. Make it super defined and maybe not what they're asking for unless. Put us. Some stipulation on. Building new structures, which I know they're saying they don't want to, but after it gets done, we're out of the. Building permit process. So. To alleviate. People's concerns that it's just a play to, and then I'm going to build a bunch of stuff later. Put a condition in there that. It would, if they wanted to build stuff, even though it's not the way it's done now, it would come back before the board like. All building permits used to be a long time ago when meetings were way, way too long. Definitely define the number of overnight guests allowed and then on top of the building permit thing. Also quite possibly put a stip. Reference somehow of repair, replacement, improvements, not new things. And that's the first start of them.
Okay, super. Kenny, do you have any?
Well. I, I would agree with, with Blake particularly on stuff like the road. They pay taxes on that county road just like the rest of us and. It's a good road and I don't think the, the uh. Impact on, on road. Is as big a deal as people would like to make it to be. I, I agree on, on. Making some conditions there that, that. Suggest to be followed on, 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 I don't think three events a month is too many myself, but. I could go with some conditions. I wouldn't have any problem with doing that, but I, I want to be sure that there's something that. Accomplishes something. I don't want to just make it harder on the applicants to. Get approved.
And I, I would agree with that. I, I think this, this would be a great attribute. It's a beautiful location. I love the Upper Hill back. I, I definitely understand the concerns, especially in regards to, I know that you've addressed not building anymore. Any more facilities, but I guess that would definitely be something. I would like to affirm as well is that it does need to come before us. But otherwise, I, I feel like the applicants have done a good job of this proposal and, and I think that. I think it would be a good addition to that location and to our area. Does anybody else have any comments?
Can I make my one other comment for a second? And the one other thing we do have to address, just because. Even though it's historically been done or is being done in other places. Have to somewhat address the kitchen thing and the rooms and just because. That's the way these regulations that we're operating off read and. We can't just sit here unwillingly say, we're just going to ignore that part of the rule. So. Something to do with that too. So that that become, comes in compliance.
Yes. Go ahead.
So. Um, I'd say, I think that a question about our weddings held on A1. It's a bit of a red herring. It's not, what we're talking about here is land use and we're talking about, we're not talking about someone that. Owns an A1 property that wants to have a wedding for a family member at their house, right? That, that is allowed. That might be called an accessory use. It's incidental to the primary use of the property. Which is living or agricultural operations. That's, that's. Seems like a no-brainer to me. Uh, that's not what this is. This is a event, commercial event operation. And Blake, you may be wanting to make the distinction between a guest ranch and the event, but we have an application in front of us. As we always do, that is a very specific proposal that says that here is the operation of this thing that we want. Now, I think, I don't think we can start to parse that out and say, well, we want to say yes to this, but. No to that. We have, I mean, we don't frequently, that's a, that would be a dramatic change, right? We can kind of put conditions on things and stuff, I think is appropriate, but. I, I don't, I, I think we have to look at the application that's in front of us. So I, I think that it's a really, it's a false argument to say that. People have been having weddings on A1 and therefore this is that, this is not that. They're very different things. You, you get. If a mom gives a kid a haircut at home, that doesn't mean everybody can open a barber shop at their house, right? That, those are very different operations and, and things. So, um, and I don't think that. You know, I, there's, there's a few tests around like what's reasonable for this sort of thing. And I think one that came up at the commissioner meeting was commercial. Is it commercial or not? But there are others. There's ones around when it comes to land use, frequency, intensity. What is the, what's the actual ongoing operation look like? So we talk about three a month versus two a year. Those are distinctive differences that are meaningful. Um, so I don't, I, I think it would be remiss to just simply say. And let's say that, let's say that, that there were mistakes made in the past, bad judgments were made in the past. I don't think that gives us license to then violate the regulations today. As Blake said, we have regulations in front of us. Our job is to. Make sure that people follow them. And if we have erred in the past, that doesn't mean that we should expand our error. It means that we haven't done a good job. In the past, we should do better and maybe there's some. In the past, we should do better and maybe there's some enforcement issues too. So I, I think that I think that this operation. I don't, I don't know how I asked, I'm going to say over 50 questions this evening. Most of the answers were, I don't know. Our duty up here is in the CUP processes to, is an adjudicative process. We're asked to take the information that's presented to us to consider the criteria and to make two findings in the affirmative. And if we can't make those in the affirmative, then we can't say yes to this. I, I don't know how we could all just listen to the answers we got, which were mostly, I don't know, we're going to figure it out later. So there, we're being asked right now to just trust as opposed to doing our jobs and, and giving the information that we have, make a judgment call on whether this looks like, we can say a special need is being met, including providing new jobs and expanding economic base. Whether the proposed location will best serve the centrists, whether there's a general compatibility with surrounding land values. Whether there's an impact on surrounding environment in terms of noise, odor, particulate emissions and hazards. Whether there's an impact on the transportation system, an impact on water resources, supply and pollution, whether there's creativity in the design of the project and whether there's general conformity with the goals and the policies of the comprehensive plan. Those are the criteria that we are asked to consider so that we can make the findings that the proposed location of the use is in accordance with the purposes of this resolution. And I would encourage you to look at the purposes of the resolution. And the district, A1, that is, in which the site is located. And the, also the finding that the proposed location of the use and conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. I don't know how you all could hear what we just heard tonight, take the information that's presented to us and, and make those statements that I find that, that would be, that's challenging to me to, we just all heard the same thing and that you it sounds like can make those judgment calls on that. And I don't know how you get there. I would love to hear more on how you do, if, if you do. So I'll leave my comments there. Thanks.
I, I would just question on, on any other CUP, we gone into that depth of questioning. I, it's always seemed to me it's, it's I don't think we have. This is what I'd say.
And what's your point to that? What, what, what's that mean to you?
That means we gotta be fair to everyone. It's got to be the, the, the same standard. And I guess if, if the, if the CUP standard is going to, you're going to answer every question to, that you have studied everything that you ask or might ask and that the applicant will have, will be able to explain, yes, this is our study. This is the paperwork we got on it or, or the facts or whatever. And the next CUP person, it's the applicant, applicant that comes will have to be prepared in the same exact way. And I, I don't think there's any room for I, I guess common sense. On, for me anyway. If, if, if we're going to have everyone answering 78 questions to a, to a specific degree. I, I just, I have a problem with that. I guess that would be my point.
So your problem is that I asked questions. Okay.
I have a problem with asking the question, but expecting an answer that's going to be, yeah, we did study on all this. And if anyone ever comes up with a, no, we didn't study that.
Well, we frequently get folks that are prepared to answer those questions and provided in the application. So I guess what I would ask you, how are you making your judgment calls on these criteria and those findings with the information that you have? If we don't have answers to those questions?
I, I'm listening to what they're saying and I, I feel like to me, the, the answers are, are honest. And the, the, the ones that are I, I don't know. You pegged me on that one, I would say, but it's what my gut says.
Yeah. Well, I would agree they're honest, but a lot of what I heard was, I don't know, we haven't figured it out yet. And I'm speculating. That's what I heard. So.
Well, and I'll go on further to say that I I, I have experience working at a guest ranch. I've been around them a lot. I, that was a lot of the basis for my comments is that I, I do understand how they operate. I don't think it's necessary to ask all of the very technical questions. If we're going to expect people to do all of these studies, then we need to rewrite everything and have a list of studies that need to be done before they come to present to us. I very much appreciate your questions and I understand where they're coming from, but I agree with Kenny that I I don't know that we, we go this, why do we have to go this in depth? And would we do this with any other place that is looking for a guest ranch or is it that it's this place in particular?
So how do you, Holly, then how do you come up with whether there's an impact on the transportation system? And I would just say that I didn't ask for studies. I'd mentioned studies a couple of times. I'm asking, what do you, did you do analysis? Did you do studies? So I'm not demanding studies on everything. I'm just asking, was there any diligence of any type, any analysis? So the answer was no. How, how do you then make your judgment call on whether the impact to the transportation system or not?
I live beside of the double J. So if we're going to use that as an example, I live right beside of there. I see the traffic all the time. I also live on the way up to the Timberline Lodge. And so I see the traffic that comes in and there. So this is honestly a personal opinion that I've seen it firsthand. What very highly successful, well-operated guest ranches, what kind of an impact they have on the neighborhood. So that is my personal opinion.
Okay. So not based on the evidence that they've given us or information that they've given us, just on your personal opinion?
I guess what evidence are they supposed to present? I mean, you're asking for a lot of presumptions.
Well, the whole premise of an application for a CUP is to provide information that shows a level of diligence that allows us to make judgment calls about what's in front of us so that we can consider those criteria and make those findings. So I, I see very little diligence at all. I don't, I heard, I don't know how many people are going to be there. It's going to depend. I don't know what the traffic's going to look like. I don't know what the dust is going to look like. We don't know what the sound is. I mean, I, most of the questions I asked were, I don't know. We'll figure it out later. There's no plan, there's been no planning done. There's been no preliminary planning done. There's been, so that, that shows a level of no diligence or very little diligence. Which is the obligation and the burden of the applicant.
So I guess my question to you then is how would you propose that? What diligence? How would you propose that they present that? How would they know those things? What suggestions would you have that they could have done this better?
Well, this same applicant has presented to us before with a great amount of diligence. So I think they know how to do it. But for me, I would like to see some sort of analysis, some sort of planning, some sort of data. You know, to, to back up what they say. And to give us the information we need to make the judgment calls.
Okay.
It did. We, we, we talked about the road going in there a lot during the, the Jackson Ford Ranch discussions. Would, would that information still be relevant on how, I seem to remember that road was up to standards of like 800 vehicles a day or something. I don't remember how many it would, it was way, way above what, what was being, it was being used for. I would, I would think that one would be one of the criteria that I would use on, on the road traffic and like as, as far as the dust mitigation and stuff. The, a county road, they do get magged. Whether it's the, the responsibility of, of private or a corporation to, to mag the road. In addition, I don't know if that's even legal. I don't know. But anyway, that, that's one of the things we, we've, we've studied or heard about quite a little bit and that I use that as part of my decision making.
Does anybody else have any more comments? Okay. Well, with that being said, is anyone prepared to make some kind of a motion? Yeah?
Were we gonna? Would the conditions be on after the motion or if they're going to be put on them or what's?
Um, yes. So the way that I have it written up is following what I believe that we've been following with the, the one motion that includes the two parts. And then at the end of it, we can put whatever proposed conditions, whoever's making the motion or we can discuss the conditions. Is that correct?
I think we should, if we're going to do conditions, I think we should discuss them before they have the list so that we can make the motion with the conditions.
Okay.
That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah. Okay. That sounds great. So does anybody want to start with their thoughts on conditions?
Did you start creating a list?
Yeah.
So what do you have so far?
I'm worried if we're going to get to the point where we have a motion. Which, well, the number of events a year, you know, where they're asked, they're saying three times a month, five times 12, which would be 36, where that does seem somewhat excessive. Where you know, if you want depending on whatever you think that number, I mean, two is completely unrealistic. I mean, I don't know how anyone thinks someone can run a business and only get to do two things a year. I don't know. Unless you're the masters or there's not a lot, not a lot of ways to make money and only do something twice a year. But whatever, how, you know, whatever that number was, if, if you wanted to divide it into the total year, actually do per month and total number per year. Either way. Where to me, the, a total number is more appropriate than saying so many per month throughout the year. Just because it gives them greater leeway to the actual customer that they're trying to provide to, to make money. Which is what most people in the world are trying to do today. Then definitely address the no new structures. Without it coming before the board and other than allowing for repair, replacement or improvement to already existing structures. Greatly define the number of overnight guests that are allowed somewhere to the tune of around 30. And then put a stipulation that they would need to, a condition that they would need to make a separate dining hall facility that is not, doesn't have rooms. That's my start.
Do you mind if I chip in? So, well, on the, on the number of events, I think my, my preference would be to limit it to one per month in any calendar month. And I think that if we say you can do 12 a year and those all stack up in the summer, I think the impact is pretty tremendous because it's all going to pile up over two or three months. So I'd like to keep it to one per calendar month. And in addition, I think we need to have a noise curfew, all amplified sound and music ceases by, I'll say 10 PM. We have quiet hours between 10 and seven. That there aren't generators running that aren't, you know, emergency generators. That outdoor lighting be dark sky compliant. And that is, then the lights are out by that 10 PM. Like we need to require that a traffic management plan is submitted. That dust control, dust mitigation plan is submitted. I'd like to see something around waste removal plan. Emergency plan. And I would say that I would propose that the CUP expires or is up for review again in three years. They're not building, I mean, typically the reason you wouldn't do that is if they're investing in infrastructure. They're not. So in that case, I think that we say, if this were to move forward, that we want to be able to review it and see how it's going. As opposed to making it permanent.
Um, my, my only question to you, Chris, is, I mean, I understand the noise thing. But I'm just want to point out that no one else in the county has a noise requirement because there isn't a nuisance ordinance for noise.
Well, that's not true. We have put noise, we put hours on things and actually for the same applicant, right? For the man camp that was going to be there.
Right. But in a sense, and I'm just saying, no one else. Dan can go and play music all night long if he wants and bother all of his neighbors however much he wants to. But we're going to tell Mr. Christensen that he cannot bother.
Well, our obligation is to say, what conditions do we need to put on a use that is a conditional use? Because it's not a permitted use for very specific reasons that will not disrupt and dramatically change the character and nature of the surrounding area.
Right.
So to me, I'm just saying, that's, that's what I've conditioned that I would think would help meet that criteria.
No, and I'm not against noise thing. I'm just bringing back to the fact that there are still things that we put on people in CUPs that we're considering nuisances that are not applied as nuisances to every other citizen in landowner and Sub Lake County.
But there's a big difference between a private citizen and a commercial operation.
But I'm not against a noise thing and having hours. What would those hours look like?
I mean, I threw out 10 to seven, 10 PM to 7 AM. Quiet hours.
Oh, quiet, oh, the quiet hours is defined as 10 to 7?
Hand lights out, exterior, you know, event lights out.
I, I
Other than safety lighting.
Mm-hmm.
I think that that's hard during the summer because it doesn't get dark until nine 30 or 10.
So what do you think's a good time?
What's the timeline? What's the time limit we put on short-term rentals?
It's a good question.
It's not in my book.
I've got it here.
Can you define kind of when you get that found? What, what you're talking about, like what you'd want in a waste management plan or the, the emergency plan or?
So 11 to seven is what short-term rentals is. Waste management plan, I'm curious just about, I think in my mind, this relates to both. Um, waste management plan, I'm curious just about, uh, I think in my mind, this relates to both potential, uh, for, you know, waste from events getting into the Obak River and stuff, but also the bear conflict stuff that the, um, uh, game and fish spoke about. So they, you know, they recommend, uh, getting rid of, uh, trash on a daily basis. If you got a three day event, you, there's trash sitting around. Um, I mean, bear proof containers is one way to address that, but another way is just making sure there's not stuff sitting around. So I'd like to see some sort of plan around that, whatever it is.
Okay.
I, you're gonna take the garbage away and not burn it all. It'd be nice. So you, you guys don't currently use bear proof trash cans and, I mean, you don't have a bear problem at, that shot? Dan, do you have a bear problem? Do you, do you use bear safe trash and stuff? Oh.
There is a provision in the regulations on noise. Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Section fourteen, uh, chapter two, no noise shall be op, no use shall be operated so that the waste resulting said uses susceptible beyond the boundaries of the property which said uses located. Intermittent noise from vehicles, ranching and farming operations changed on the summer operations. Put in private, your temporary construction operations and uses in C one, C H one, I L and L H district shall be exempt from this section.
Thanks for pointing that out.
So if I was out there at my house the other day and was really surprised at how loud the highway was, it's a mile away from us. And though the conditions were right, you could hear people talking, sitting up there on the, the, uh, turnout there at the, off of the highway. I couldn't, I got my hair nades in, but I, they're not that good, but I could, I could hear the voices and the traffic was very loud. But that was an unusual situation. Does that sort of thing, does that come into way as a, a determining factor on, on noise control or mitigation?
Excuse me. I, well, I don't, I mean, I wonder if this would fall under. It says intermittent noise from vehicles, ranching and farming operations, chainsaws and similar equipment in private use, temporary construction operations and use in C one, C H one, I L and I H districts shall be exempt from this section. So it sounds like what your time is, is a temporary traffic noise or something?
Or yeah, there's people were standing out there looking at the pape signers. I would assume that's what they were doing instead of what they probably were doing.
Trying to find their way to the hatch.
Yeah, but you get, you get, I could hear them. I could hear the, the distinct sound of voices and it, um, that would not be incidental or, or I don't know. It just, we could regulate a plum out of the situation here. If, if there's no room for, you know, something like that happens, does that cost them their C U P in three years if they come back for renewal because of conditions at one point in time or something? Just food for thought.
Are we righted in a way that incidental noise from conversation and traffic isn't, is exempt like that, the way that's written?
Right. Uh, like the event as the source of the noise, right? So bands playing, music playing.
Right.
Things of that nature.
And maybe the band playing, you know, it calls to mind that when they had the, uh, Jazz Festival up here a few years ago, it was really, really loud. I would think there could be some stipulations on how loud a band would be up there. Maybe minimize the, the volume of the band and stuff or entertainment. If that would be a possibility.
They can only turn the dial to five, not past five. I don't know how to write that bit.
Okay, so.
Any more conditions? Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, you're good. Um, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask is if there's any more. Like I said, I think that, I think we need to be cautious though, because to reiterate what Kenny said, we can condition them right out of this even being possible and I think we just need, I think that there's definitely some key things that I would be on board with, but not all of those conditions.
Which ones do you not like?
Um, I'll, I'll say which ones I agreed with. I definitely, I, I agree with limiting the number of major events. Um, the no new construction without them coming in front of the board, um, for the permits, uh, the number of overnight guests defined, um. I could be on board with the noise curfew and, uh, on the waste management plan and, um, what was the other one that you said? And I was gonna write it down. Um.
Dark skies?
No.
No new structures?
Oh, no, the, uh, having the cooking facility be.
Needs to not be somewhere where there's rooms.
Where there's rooms. Yes. So if they move the cooking facility to the said, uh, saloon, and is that what we're calling? That would be, um, just to follow the follower regulations.
And then you're not okay with the comeback in three years?
Um, no, I'm not. I think that I mean, I think that we have put enough conditions on it and we've outlined it enough. I don't see the need to come back in three years. Do we make any of the other guest ranches come back in three years?
Well, we haven't, but it's been something we've slowly tried to address because.
That was the original condition for the Jackson Fork Lodge.
Yeah.
There was a sunset condition.
And in the new regulation, it was something that we talked about reel things in. Um, and then it got muddy because of Clayton's thing about the legality of capital improvements.
Right.
Which I, I understand you're in Kenny's point, but I think for our due diligence, I would rather put more conditions now and then that allows the B O C C the chance to either choose to adopt them or get rid of them or see that they were the things that public brought up and are, aren't concerned about where I would rather err, um, on the side of extreme caution, um, seeing that with, it's evaluating the criteria of making it this big umbrella of, yes, it meets this criteria if you do all of these things and if they chose to feel that it was excessive or they didn't need those or they completely disagreed with this or wanted to add more, um, than they could. So which I'm okay with everything that we've said. But that's my reasoning.
Okay.
On the number of overnight guests, you mentioned thirties. Is there a reason we wouldn't just peg it to like two per room or something and just say, uh, twenty four, I think twenty four is, there's twelve rooms, twenty four overnight guests would be.
Um, I'd, I just say, I just like, the thing I don't like about doing the two per bedroom, is just because then if you get into this enforcement thing of, you know, someone actually wanted to take a room and make it, put three sets of bunk beds in it and they put their six kids in there and they want to take the two, mom and dad want their own room. Would pay like, you know, just, it's a logistics thing.
Can we fall back to what, how we figure out the criteria for short term rental?
Well, in short term rentals, we defined it as two people per bedroom plus two extra people, which comes up to thirty four.
Okay.
With the twelve bedrooms, because you have twelve bedrooms, which is twenty four and then five different C U Ps with two extra people. Is that's how I came up with thirty four. I mean, that's how I interpret.
Use the same as what we do. I, my only concern is, you know, I don't wanna, and maybe we could make this a condition like no, you know, I don't want flat tents and yurts and RVs and stuff used for lodging, uh, onsite. But I would be, uh, assuming that the number that we say doesn't result in temporary lodging stuff, then I'm fine with that. I mean, I think it makes sense to follow what we do in the S T Rs.
Yeah, which the, I mean, that's where I got that number is just following that.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. And I would agree with saying that they can't put up any additional temporary housing.
Okay, thank you. Someone better be typing a lot because this is gonna be a mouthful.
I, I would like to amend the, the number of events if I could. I, I would like I would, a minimum of, of, or a two instead of just one per month. I would, I would think that would be a little more in line with. And I don't know, we might be cutting it down to where you guys were. It's not feasible to do that. I don't know, but I'm not getting much feedback and.
I could live with, I mean, I could support one, I could support two. Um, I just wanna give them, I think it's a good thing, so.
Well, and I, I like your idea though of having it like for the year, how many? Because I mean, realistically, there will be probably months a year that they might not even be able to get into the ranch. So there'll be times that there, it, there won't be any activity at all.
And then, I don't know, you know, and then Chris's point is it's hard to, how do you balance that with the neighbors? Um, so which, you know, where when you just say one a month, it's very straightforward to what the impact is gonna be. So I, I don't, I don't know how to, you know, because if you, if you were gonna say two a month, that'd be twenty four a year. And then, you know, say if you truly, you know, wedding season's really four or five months here. You know, you could theoretically end up with four or five in one month. Probably just four, because it, I don't, turn around, um, which could could be impactful every weekend for the entire summer. Um, and I, I would say if we said two per month and then the commissioners felt different about changing it or wanted to be more restrictive, they could.
Yeah.
Where, you know.
That's pretty much a prerogative on all these things, aren't it? Isn't it?
We, well, you know, we made a lot of conditions for things and they've completely taken them all away. And then there's things that we've made no conditions on and didn't approve it. And they approved it and put a ton of conditions on it. So it's, it's interpretation, um, which not to be stepped out of line and normally they wouldn't get a speak, but I think Ed and Mr. Christensen wanted to make a comment.
Gentlemen, do, well, can you please, sorry?
So the application is, uh, three events per month, um, throughout the entire year for thirty six total. Um, obviously the summer season is gonna be the high demand season. And so we'd ask, you know, maybe three per month for June, July, August, or whatever those months are, and then maybe one per month after that. So an overall cap, but, uh, obviously the summertime is gonna be the prime season for hosting weddings and, and events. So we'd like to have a little, little more in the summer, a little less throughout the year.
Thanks for the slider. Um, in that, that could be a different way to approach it.
I think we could do it that way. Do three per month during.
June, July, August, September.
July, August, September. And then.
One a month.
One a month thereafter. Would everybody be
I'd go with that.
With that?
Not, I do not agree to that. And I'd rather see like two per month in the summer months and one the rest of the year.
So two instead of three?
Yeah. I think, to me, I think three, you know, nine days a month of hundreds of people
Possible.
coming up and down your road is, uh, I mean, I don't, I don't, as you know, I don't, I think this is a fundamentally flawed application, so I don't think it should happen at all. But if I were to move forward and I were asked to put restrictions on it to make it more in alignment, I, I think it's should be less than three per month in any month.
I would support just doing the three and if the commissioners wanted to make it more restrictive.
Then they can.
Then they can.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Three straight through?
No, three for the busy months and then.
Four months of summer.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay. So then, um, every, is everybody in agreeance on no new construction without them coming before the board? Or a permit? Is that how we would word that?
Well, other than for
Other than for.
Repair, replacement or improvement.
Yes.
But we're, we're so far out of that process now. If, does he like say on the main, what they're calling the main lodge now, Dennis? If the roof collapses, does he have to come get a building permit to rebuild his roof? Or he just gets to rebuild his roof?
Or it collapses, there's gonna be interior damage. So they would probably come in and get a building permit to remodel and stuff. If the roof blows off, gets holes in the roof or whatever, trees fall through it to repair the roof, no, they do not have to. Um, roofs, sightings, uh, replacement of windows, we don't require building permits for.
So there's still things that.
Structurally changing the building, then yes.
Okay, so there are still things that he could come and have to ask you for a pin, permit for it that doesn't involve actually building a new structure?
Yes.
So yeah, I can put all those in there.
Okay. Everybody good with that one?
Can I back you up to your three summer months?
Yes, please.
What are your summer months?
We stated June, July, August and September. And then one per month, every month thereafter. Um, so next on my list, I have the number of overnight guests are clearly defined as, is it thirty four then?
That's what the short term rental number is now.
Okay, um, divided as thirty four with absolutely no temporary housing, including tents, yurts, et cetera. So everybody, how do you feel about that one?
Yeah.
Yep. So can I ask, because this came up earlier with the double J ranch where they, in their application, they said two events, uh, and then they came back later and they're apparently doing more. But so this application says a, a maximum of a hundred people, no more than seventy two consecutive hours. Uh, do we need to make those conditions or, or can we assume that that is because it's proposed? So every, so that would mean that everything that we wanna make sure that they're gonna follow through with in their application, we need to make a condition. But I got a lot more if that's the route we're taking.
I think those are the two biggest things. Or what are the other things you're worried about?
Well, don't we, I mean, don't we typically, when we approve an application, we say as presented, doesn't that mean the thing that we're, is proposed is the thing that we're approving? If they give us something and then do something drastically different, that's okay? And if it's not a condition on it?
As proposed, no, you are correct. So if it is in their proposal, that is.
But doesn't that fall back on the commissioners? That if we approve it as proposed, but then they allow for different changes, that's, that's up to them. It doesn't fall back on. That's that's up to them. It doesn't fall back on us.
Put those specific things in there as specific conditions, that locks it in. Tighter than a proposal. We asked for, on the other one, we asked for a business plan, that that was not in, the business plan was the only condition that was on there. Yes, it was approved, proposed. It was stated, you know, it was not stated in the um, business plan. So if you want, yeah, it should be as a condition.
Is that the double J one right there? You got it. There's a lot of meetings, but I wasn't here when we did the double J. April twenty twenty two.
Okay, so we are at the maximum, am I understanding this correctly?
Yeah, I guess it sounds like.
Hundred guests. No longer than seventy two hours.
Right, which includes setup and take down.
Yeah.
Do we need to clearly define that as a hundred event guests?
Yep.
Yes.
That does not mean whether it's a guest, whether they stay overnight or not.
Okay, um, then moving through, we have the noise curfew.
Let's say we just stick with what we did to short term rentals and do eleven to seven.
Eleven to seven? What do you think about that, Kenny?
That'd be all right.
Chris, thoughts?
Mm hmm. Yep.
Um, waste management plan.
I would like to see one, I mean.
Okay.
I just, I think that's one of those things that it somewhat needs to be addressed. It could have been addressed better in the application and it shows the commissioners that it is of concern.
Waste management in refuge, such like that.
Trash. Trash and refuge.
Uh, trash and sewage.
Sewage.
Is what my thinking is.
Okay, so for those events, there would probably have to be one, because the septic systems on each of those are adequate, but.
Yeah, correct. So specifically.
For the events.
For events.
The the septic system is adequate for the events or just for the?
No, they're adequate for the dwellings, but not for additional.
Where are the hundred other people gonna go PPE?
That's, yeah.
What are you gonna do with their garbage?
The old two holder.
Okay, um, then moving on, uh, specifying that the cooking facilities, cooking, what, how do you word that? Cooking facilities, dining facilities?
We need to reference it the way we've talked about it in.
Right.
In the regulations.
Yeah, it's like page four or something.
Definition of the.
So it's a ranch with guest accommodations, which has a lot. So the lodge facility used for dining, separate from individual guest cabins with sleeping rooms. Suffice and to house at least one family. I'm just looking to see here, so. That's the language. A lodge facility used for dining, separate from individual guest cabins.
Almost just write it like that, huh? That they provide a lodge facility for dining, separate from individual guest cabins. Art rooms for guest period. Write that.
Okay, and then we've got the max hundred event guests. No more than seventy two hours at a time, including setup and cleanup.
We do notification to neighbors of event dates with a point of contact to for complaints or emergencies.
Oh, I like that. I mean, that's somewhat what the short term rental rule is.
Yeah.
That's fine. Just to be clear for me on on the hundred guests, that's still, that's not counting the staff that's setting up and all that stuff, is it?
No, it's events, specific events. Yeah, and I'm sorry, I should, I have that wrote down, but yes, maximum a hundred event guests.
Okay.
And then you could actually have other guest ranch guests there that aren't part of the hundred people.
Yeah.
Who are we notifying the neighbors?
Dan?
I think residents on Hoback, Upper Hoback Road. It's at the very end of the road, so everybody on that road will be impacted, right?
That needs.
We need it.
But it's not your burden to do, that's the applicant's burden.
That's true, but they need to know. We we advertise or, you know.
Do.
Within a thousand feet, um, within, you know, mile radius or something, or as you just stated, the entirety of the Upper Hoback Road, so.
I agree. I think we need to define it, because just telling them they need to contact neighbors.
And then what that would be. So in our short term rental, we have, um, if you send money out for things like that. So if it's every week that they need to send a, you know, twice a month, but sending events out, I mean, they need to know what to send or or the content.
Right. That's true, yeah. Um, I don't know, maybe they can set up a thing like we have where they say, I let us know if you want notification email going out or something. I'm not sure, but I think I think everyone on that road will be impacted, so. I would propose that everybody should be have the opportunity to be notified of event dates and.
That that's anyone who accesses their property off of the Hoback Road there?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
I would, I would disagree with that. It's a long road. I don't think that everyone, I think that we need to have specifically a radius from the ranch.
Well, if if you go a radius and if it's nine miles long, if it's a nine mile radius, there's gonna be a lot more people in that circle.
Right.
As opposed to just going up and down that road. But I agree, I I would think.
I mean, I think within.
Two miles?
Yeah. In two miles of the ranch.
What's the logic of two miles versus the everybody else that's impacted that's not within that two miles?
Well, it is like when we were trying to decide on how mu- how many people to I to to notify when when there was something coming up here uh, with an application or something for a CUP or we've we've finally decided that this the staff would notify somebody within how far? Five hundred feet or a thousand feet? A thousand feet. As opposed to going all the way down the road, we have a.
Two, two miles basically gets you to the Jackson Hole Ranch.
Yeah. So I would say that, I mean, the reason, I think there's a couple of reasons we put those, one is we don't know where a given application is gonna be, so we it's hard, in this case, we know exactly where it is all the time. Uh, so we can be more specific, because we have better information. And the other thing is, um, you know, obviously, that's a, it's a lot of, uh, it's 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 work on that that the office has to do. There's a lot of unknown variables around that. So in this case, it seems pretty easy to me that everybody on the road could sign up. It's the same to send an email to fifty people as it is to send to two. And it would seem cheap and easy to send it to everybody who's gonna be impacted. I don't know why we wouldn't.
And after you get it set up the first time, it's pretty simple.
And I I would, I could guess probably if if they want the notifications opposed to don't bother.
Yeah.
I I could go with that, I guess.
I'm okay with making it the whole road, because it is gonna impact everyone on the road and. And it's still not that many people.
Ability to contact people. To acquire their email information or their mailing information. Mailing information is easy to do, the tax group. And maybe that's the way it would be done, because like mailing would be, because you get the information from the tax rolls and your um, events will be known. We went through this with notifications for closing the road at the resort for construction and they couldn't be mailed, because something's gonna happen in four hours or something. So I think mailing would be reasonable. Because you can show that you mailed.
I think whatever is, whatever you see fit, I wouldn't prescribe, whether it's mail or email or whatever, but one way or another.
Yeah, I don't think we technically wanna say how you notify them, just that you do.
Well, then that could even look like like once, like at the beginning of the season, send a calendar.
Yeah.
Of the dates.
I'm not just gonna work out however far planned out ahead they are.
I guess it was. August, we find out, August 21st, we find out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You good with that, Kenny?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Do I, I'm not sure if I understood right or not. Did, were we, were you all against the idea of event lighting being off at this by eleven P M?
No, I was fine with that, other than safety lighting.
Right, other than safety lighting, yes.
Okay.
In a large part of the summer, they're not gonna have lighting, because it's still light until ten o'clock.
Right.
Yeah, I I don't agree with it. I think, like I said, just especially where they're located, just there's lots of trees and I just over restricting. I think we have to be careful putting in too many conditions on this, but it's all agree with it, I'll write her down. So what, is it the same as the the noise?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Restrictions then?
I I would say event lighting, with the exception of safety lighting, will be off by or no, no later than eleven P M and no earlier than seven A M.
Okay, is there any other conditions?
Who, this question there, who's who's gonna define safety lighting as opposed to event lighting?
I mean, it's a commonly, it's commonly used when you talk about like exterior and interior lighting. So it tends to be like, what do your guests need to be safe, right? We're not saying, we don't want folks tripping on paths and stuff. So obviously, you're gonna light paths and things like that and have maybe a porch light or things like that. But just, I'm thinking, if there's a stage, there's not big lights, you know, lighting up the night sky when the band's not playing and nobody needs to be watching that anymore.
Pretty mobile lighting that you brought in and isn't part of your everyday. Well, you know, just like your night light on your garage stays there all the time, but.
Yeah.
If you brought a giant power pack in and just turned off at eleven.
Okay.
Are there any other ones that you?
I'm sorry.
Was there an emergency plan written there?
No.
You had that on there, right? An emergency plan?
I mentioned that I'd like to see some sort of emergency plan. I would also, or maybe a stand-in is just that they'll coordinate with fire police and EMS around that sort of thing. That's what we do, like special events, we ask them to coordinate with each of the those services.
So so a a probably a one-time plan would probably suffice, wouldn't it?
I mean, I would I would say that maybe we don't necessarily need the plan, but maybe we just want them to be in touch with the appropriate personality to those places. And they can plan accordingly.
That's a good idea to have, have their contact, know them and stuff, but to come up with a plan each time, I would have a problem with that.
Yeah, I would agree, but just as long as.
It'd be pretty standardized, so.
What's that?
It would be pretty standardized.
Yeah, yeah.
Chad would come up with his idea of what they're gonna do and Casey will be like, this is what we're gonna do and.
Mm hmm. So if I just put correspond with appropriate emergency personnel?
I think that works.
Hey, any other conditions?
I I would ask if we put any conditions in, it's a deal killer here, that we don't even need to vote on now. Okay.
Good point. Okay, so with that being said, is anyone willing to make a motion one way or another?
Just as a best practice that we talked about in the past, it's most clear if we make motions in the affirmative, and even if we were gonna vote against it, you just vote again, because that's just, it gets confusing otherwise.
Okay.
It's way confusing.
Isn't it the word?
Yes.
Is this the one that doesn't?
Yes.
And then you're gonna have to read all.
Yeah.
I'll play it and read my.
That would be bottom, yeah, we'll wait for it.
Here, so your finger won't go straight, but they can't sew it or anything. It just has to grasp it so fast.
Okay, we're going to make a motion then.
Okay, if I can get everyone's attention, we're going to reconvene.
Having reviewed and considered the eight criteria for the conditional use permit, I propose that we find, one, that the proposed location of the use is in accordance with the purposes of. Purposes of this resolution and the district in which the site is located. And number two. That the proposed location of the use and the conditions under which it will be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health. Safety or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. And I move to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve this request from the Deadshot Holdings requesting a conditional use permit. For the development and operation of a guest ranch located at eight eighty-three Upper Holback. Twenty-three, one seventy-four in Bondurant, within the agricultural zoning district pursuant to chapters. One and two, and in accordance with chapter five of the Sublet County Zoning and Development Regulations as presented with the following conditions. One number of these. One, limit number of events, three per month during the months of June, July, August, September. And one per month throughout thereafter. Number two, no new construction without coming to the board. This board?
Yeah, oh, yes.
But coming to the planning and zoning board for permit other than repair, replacement or improvement. Number three, number of overnight guests defined thirty-four, no temporary housing, tents, urts, et cetera. Number four, noise curfew from eleven P M till seven A M the next morning. Five, waste management plan for events, septic plan, refuge plan. Six, maximum one hundred guests.
Or event, event guests.
Event guests, no, uh, guests, no seventy-two hour time, including setup and cleanup. Seven, lodge facilities used for dining, separate from facilities used for guest lodging. Eight, notify neighbors of event dates, number of contact persons, all residents up, up. Upper Holback Road. Whatever number the next one is, lighting restrictions, no event lighting. With the exception of safety lighting between eleven P M and seven A M. Correspond with appropriate emergency personnel.
Any friendly amendments?
I'd just like to. It's just a friendly amendment to guests being defined as, um. Whether they're, uh, we said event guests, but we said whether they're staying overnight or not.
Okay, yeah, how, um.
I think we could just say this exact same thing, event guests, whether staying overnight or not.
Okay.
I think would do it.
Okay, perfect. So.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Exclusive of the thirty-four, exactly.
You have to ask Kenny if he wants to accept the amendment.
Okay, Kenny?
Accept that friendly man.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Okay, so we, we have. We have a motion to accept the application. Do I have to reread all of it?
No.
No.
Okay, with the list of, um, conditions. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And we need to have discussion, if there's discussion on that.
She, normally she would ask if there's, the commission wants to have more discussion.
Is there any further discussion on this?
I'm good.
I'm fine.
I would, I would just encourage you to read the definition of incidental in the Planner's Dictionary and, and consider the, uh. Fact that a wedding is not customarily incidental to an agricultural operation, but. I'll rest my case there.
Okay, thank you. So all in favor of passing this motion, say aye.
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 Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
So three, four passing it, one opposed, motion passes.
You guys.
Easy fine.
Uh, yep, we're getting there, Dan, sorry. Yep, sorry about that. No, no, you're good. I had to find my agenda. I had it lost in my stack of papers. Um, I would like to make note too on record that Commissioner Harbor attempted to. Call in and he was having technical difficulties and he tried in on the first one, so I just wanted to make it on. Record that he did attempt, but couldn't get through on his end with the wifi. Um, so moving on to old business, does anyone have any old business?
Oh, can I go first?
Yes, you go first.
Um. I, I just think we should, uh, after going to the Board of County Commissioners and better clarifying us working. Forward on the rewrite of the regulations that, uh. We should inform the public of what came out of that meeting, or at least, did you, were you online on that?
I was not, no.
Um, or at least what you and I took out of it, um, and. Then. To piggyback off of that, um. I was wanting to ask the board, which I just think it would be better if it was a. United front, but seeing it has been so long since twenty twenty-three, when we. Started or gave the final draft, um. If everyone would support Holly or all of us drafting a letter, um. And sending it to the paper to, uh, try to encourage the people of Sublet County that do not participate in this process now. To come and participate and, uh, hopefully get. A larger footprint of Sublet County involved. So, those were my two things, which I don't know if you want to explain or what you took out of. The County Commissioners Meeting, or you want me to, or?
Um, yeah, I'll go ahead and start and then you, so Blake and I were both at the County Commissioners Meeting when we reached out. To the board, um, to see if we could get some general direction as to where we need to go from here with, um. The regulations and moving forward. Uh, it was their desire that we, um, that we use the twenty twenty-three. Draft and we can pull from the Whiskey Rock draft, but we use the twenty twenty-three draft. I, sorry, I can't talk tonight, draft as our basis to work from. And so, um. Essentially, there's a few things I, uh, not a lot of specifics, but we just need to clarify some things. And work through, so the plan is, is we'll work from the twenty twenty-three, um, version, line item by a light item. And clean it up and get it presentable.
And pull the things in that we want.
And pull the things in that we want from the Whiskey Rock version. But like I said, we will be working, we had originally said at our planning and zoning meeting before that. That we wanted to work from the Whiskey Rock version, um, but. It is the desire of the County Commissioners that we work from the twenty twenty-three version. So that's what we'll be working on and we can pull from. The Whiskey Rock. So, and, and thank you, I would agree with you on putting a letter out there. Um, just making people aware because it has been a long process and we do want everybody to be involved in it still. As we get closer and closer to narrowing this down.
And, are you done?
Yeah, go ahead.
And then my other comment would be, so that that first meeting is the twenty-fourth still.
Correct.
And it is going to be at the library, correct? Because this room was booked, um, so that everyone knows that. It will, that meeting next Thursday will be at the public library. Um, is that on the website test that it's at the library? And then, um. Do we want to talk about different dates today, or we will just do that next Thursday for. The subsequent meetings when hopefully Chase is here and.
Uh, that's what I would say, um, because I would like it to be. A date that works for all of us or as many of us as possible. So I would say that if we discuss. Meeting.
So, next zoning meeting has been advertised and.
They didn't care how much longer it took, um.
Just a good product.
Yeah.
Hmm. So again, um, we'll have the special meeting next Thursday, the twenty-fourth at six o'clock in the Lovett Room. Uh, Dan, you want to, Mr. Bailey, sorry?
Anybody attending this last Tuesday meeting?
Yes.
Last Tuesday's meeting, they said at the end that. Sam White wants to provide more direction for you guys. I had drafted a summary using a comprehensive plan that it submitted. To the Board of County Commissioners before, they didn't want to adopt that. So I don't think you guys had direction to go forward on the meeting yet for County Commissioners. You may want to go back and double check that for you to go ahead with. Twenty-fourth meeting.
Um, well, that, um, not to disagree with you, Mr. Bailey, but I, I guess that's. Not what I got out of the meeting on Tuesday. I was there. Um, I, I guess it was my understanding that they still wanted us. To move forward. I, I guess it was. I guess I took it that they would give us input as they had it. Maybe I took that incorrectly, but. Okay. Okay, perfect.
Regardless, we have to start having meetings and start going back through it. Which, I mean.
So I, I will definitely reach out to, uh, Mr. Bernard, the chairman, and, and see if he has any comments on that. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Christensen.
Just, just to do comments before the meeting next week, will there be a, I've been looking at the red line for risky block. Is there going to be a red line available on current regulations to the twenty twenty-three proposal? A universal, you just sent me a verse three or four and I couldn't.
The twenty twenty-three regulations are currently online and it is by chapter. So it is on the planning and zoning webpage. They're all there.
And it's redlining to the current regulations. Does it say what changes on?
No, it is the current, well.
I mean, I did, I did originally submit to you the red lines. We created a clean version to put online. It.
Yeah.
Maybe at one point we had red lines online, but I don't know. But you do have a red line in your possession of chapter by chapter.
So all the chapters are up individually, then the consolidated documents that I think you're talking about with the chapters, I think there's one through fifteen now. Is up as well.
And that, that one, I believe, that one does have all the red line remarks and stuff, doesn't it?
It's what was provided for twenty twenty-three. So, yeah, there are red lines, but it's pretty difficult.
So I think, I think that is the one, same.
And then the, I guess the next meeting is next Thursday. Are, are the meeting sequences are going to go topic by topic? So they're going to be specific. Sections you're reviewing, or is it just going to be kind of an open forum?
No, I will go line item by line item. Is that correct?
By chapter, by chapter.
Start, yeah, so we'll start from the beginning and just start working through and work through it until we can. Make it all the way through the document.
But I think we technically will start at chapter two because chapter one is definitions and we'll have to be updating that. So I think our goal, what we put on the agenda, what we talked about last time was. Chapters two, three and four is pretty ambitious. We'll see how far I can.
Yes.
For the next meeting.
We've had meetings where we've spent five hours talking about a word.
Yeah.
It's because there's too many people like you in the room.
So, um, the other thing I was going to ask about is, we don't current, I just noticed this, I think this week, but I don't think we currently have the S T Rs up with our other. With our regulations online, like I had to go into the document search to find them. I looked, maybe I missed it, but I looked all over the P and Z site and I could not find the short-term. Chapter there. So I mean, if we could just look at that, if it's not there, then let's, if we could get it up, that'd be good.
I'm sorry.
I don't know, when I searched it today, because I was doing my number thing, it.
It's in like the document center.
Uh, which I didn't pay attention to where I was.
Where you can go and search for document. Yeah, if you search online, there, it'll give you the PDF, but it's in the document center. If you go to the P and Z website and look for it, I couldn't find it anywhere.
Are you talking about?
Maybe it got lost. Okay, and maybe it's there and I missed it, but if it's not there, we should put it up.
The regulation, I'm sorry, is that what you're talking about?
Just that, so the short-term, uh, uh, short-term rental chapter that we did separate, I couldn't find that chapter.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but if we could double check that, that'd be great.
Yes, definitely. All right, is there any other old business?
Well, to go ahead with what Blake was asking, I guess I could support you doing.
Oh, yeah, is everyone in?
Support you writing a letter to the editor.
Okay.
Or whoever's in.
Um.
And I was more saying Holly draft the letter and then we all comment on it.
Yeah.
And words.
So I'll draft it up and send it to you guys and then you guys, um. Give me the okay and then we can publish it.
Yeah.
Is everyone in agreeance with that?
Which, and, and I'm not saying, you know, individually, if someone wants to write a letter, whatever they want to do, that's fine. I just. I'm just hoping that if we do it as a collaborated front, that we can get those people to participate that have not participated.
I hope you're not really disappointed in the results.
I, I just want to get the thirty-eight hundred registered Republicans that don't believe in more government to show up.
Yes.
That's what I want.
That'd be good.
Okay, so I will, and I, I would agree, I think to, to show a united front as a board, um, so I will draft up. A letter and please feel free to edit away and get something that's representative of all of us and get it. Published in the paper.
Do you like that idea of? Do you, do you like that idea of trying to get the public back engaged?
I love, I love, uh, public participation, I would discourage trying to get particular, uh, people based on politics or their stance, I think just more voices are good.
Is there any other suggestions for me to, once we get that statement, invitation, whatever you want to call it, um, any other places to, to post it or to advertise it?
If you get that statement stuff, we'll put it on
On the website.
Website.
Okay. Perfect. All right, um, if there's no other old business, then is there, um, any other general public comment, either in the room or online?
They lost everyone.
Yeah. Hopefully seeking back.
All right, well, I would like to thank everyone very much for attending, I know it's a late night and I know we have busy lives, so I really appreciate everyone being here tonight. And with that being said, I will adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-one.
Thank you, everybody, for volunteering.
Thank you.